The Town of Berlin. Country charm at the center of Connecticut.
Okay, 7:03, call the town council meeting April 19th, 2016 to order if we could rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Roll call.
Councilor Campanelli?
Here.
Councilor Evans?
Here.
Mayor Prudential?
Here.
Councilor Luddy?
Here.
Councilor Pinesse?
Here.
Councilor Rochette?
Councilor Rosso?
Here.
There you have it, more.
Thank you. Next part of the agenda is our audience of citizens. Is there anyone here which is to speak at the audience? Seeing none, I will close that part of the hearing, and we will go on to our consent agenda. Make a motion on the -- there's two items on the consent agenda.
Sure, I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda, items one and two, as they are listed here today.
Do we have a motion on that?
Second.
I said motion second, I'm sorry.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. On to new business. Topic number one. Denise?
Yes, due to some unanticipated absences in the police budget, we've had some individuals who have been out either on workers' comp or just plain vacancies due to officers leaving. The department anticipates exceeding its budgeted amount in the police overtime, but there are funds in the police line item for personnel due to the workers' comp and others leaving, so they need a transfer of an additional $50,000 from the police personnel account to the overtime account.
Okay. Motion on this?
I'll make a motion to move to approve a transfer of $50,000 from the police personnel account to the police overtime account due to unanticipated vacancies.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item number two. Topic two.
To try to get a jump on hiring this year, the police department has hired four officers since last July. Usually they try to do two a year, and that was anticipated in their budget. However, because of the absences, they've been trying to hire a couple additional ones. The $1,500 per recruit at the police academy was not anticipated, so they're looking to transfer $5,000 again from the police personnel account to the professional development account. Police personnel, professional development account.
Okay, thank you. Motion on this?
Sure. Move to approve the transfer of $5,000 from the police personnel account to the police professional development account.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Topic three.
I'm not sure if you want to hear from the chief at all, since he is here, but this is...
Sure, chief! You're here, what the heck, right?
This is also, since they have hired four officers, the fifth is in the hiring process. Again, there's a shortage in the uniform and equipment budget. The other three that were unanticipated are in need of uniforms to wear when they eventually hit the streets, so they are looking to transfer $4,000, this time from the maintenance account to the uniforms account.
Okay, thank you. Motion on this?
Moved to approve the transfer of $4,000 from the maintenance account to the uniforms account.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I do have a question.
Sure.
This chief doesn't have to leave without talking to us. No, that's not the reason for the question. The question is on the funds that are coming from the maintenance account. It just has to do with the amount of the budget amount. So in 2000, in the actual budget for the previous year was about $23,400, we're budgeting $29,600 in this year. Is that just in this year's situation, or is it going to be for next year's budget, still $4,000 available?
It depends on our bids to maintain the radio system within town. We put that out to bid usually on an annual basis, and due to competition, we've been very fortunate. You do know that we were addressing the radio situation overall, hopefully this coming year, because of the age of our equipment. And so that could impact the bids as well.
Okay, and I suspect there could be some, if we run into some shortages of parts and expenses associated with it, is it possible to come from this account? Would this be our spot?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, certainly look at this one going forward, but I appreciate the answers. Chief?
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number four.
The police department is requesting permission to contract with MHQ Inc. of Middletown, who is on the state contract to provide and install police equipment in two Ford police vehicles. There are funds available for this in the police department's capital nonrecurring vehicle account, and they are requesting $25,121.34.
Okay, thank you. Motion on this?
Okay, move to approve the purchase and installation of police emergency equipment in two Ford police vehicles, one sedan and one utility, from MHQ Inc. of Middletown, Connecticut, under state contract number 12PSX0194, for a price not to exceed $25,121.34.
Second on this?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Agenda number five.
This is a collaboration of the purchasing agent and our collector of revenue, who have worked together to provide a better online tax payment system for the residents in town. There has been an ability to pay online for many years, but the current vendor doesn't work with the new software, as well as there's a straight flat fee or an increasing fee depending on how much you charge on a credit card. There's no ability to use checks, there's no ability to save any money. The purchasing agent and the collector did some research. They went out for an RFQ, which was advertised in February, and they received seven firms that responded. They did learn that our current vendor has a preferred relationship with three of the vendors, so they interviewed those three so that the interface would be seamless for the customers or the residents that use it. The interviews occurred by committee in April, the beginning of this month, and they have unanimously chosen Invoice Cloud, and there are some factors that are listed out in the agenda item. They have the lowest e-check convenience fees, they have experience with the water and sewer software vendor that the town uses, they have the highest number of payment options, check, master charge by phone, mobile application. Both Adam and David are here to explain anything further, but they are recommending that we award a three-year contract for online tax payments to Invoice Cloud of Braintree, Mass., pending Corporation Council's review.
Okay, great. Motion on this?
Okay, move to award a three-year contract for online tax payment to Invoice Cloud of Braintree, Massachusetts, pending Corporation Council review.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Yes. Go ahead, please.
Okay. I just had a question about the ACH e-check stuff. Is that like, like when you go on, you put in your bank account number, your routing number, and all that stuff, and it withdraws automatically from your account?
Yeah, yes, so the ACH would be, just like Kristen described, it would be your routing number and your checking account, and this is a service that we've never had in the past. Our current vendor does not provide that service. Currently, you can only pay with a credit card, and the credit card is a percentage. So with the new vendor, who actually provides the lowest flat fee of all three vendors that we interviewed, taxpayers will be able to pay a flat fee of 95 cents.
That's awesome.
Whether it's their $200 car tax bill, or their, say, $5,000 real estate bill, they can go online and they pay for it, and they only pay 95 cents total.
This is just amazing. I took several trips here, trying to pay my car tax bill last year, so I fully appreciate this.
The other thing, too, is currently, we don't have a mechanism in place for someone to simply just, if your name is John Smith, you can't just easily type in John Smith and look up what you owe. You have to have your bill in front of you, you have to know all the information on your bill, and it's a nuisance for the taxpayer, it's a nuisance for us. With this new vendor, if you're John Smith, you just type in John Smith online, and just like when you pay for anything you buy on Amazon.com, you find your name, you find what you owe, you click Pay, you click the shopping cart, and then you just enter your payment information. So it's going to be a simplified, it's going to be a simplified process for the taxpayers, and then it's going to be a file that the tax office just imports in, where currently we have to take every single payment individually, so it's, it's very time-consuming for my office to put the payments through. So it's going to save time, and it's going to be convenient for both the taxpayers and the tax office.
This is great.
Dave?
Yeah, just a question on the transaction fees. Is that fixed for the three-year period, the 95 cents per transaction, or has that got an escalation through that three-year agreement?
I haven't been told that there would be an increase. The three-year agreement, I told, is a standard agreement, but they never said whether or not that involves an increase.
Well, I would ask that you would verify that.
Yeah, I could definitely...
The Corporation Council will verify that.
Sure. I could, I could talk to the contact, and I'll shoot him an email and ask him about that.
That'd be great. And then the same question on the convenience fee, or is that tied to, many times, a lot of these fees are tied to different rates, but is that, the same question is there also? Is that fixed throughout the three?
Sure. Yeah, I'll ask that as well. And the convenience fee for credit card payments is, it's a 2.95%, which is a pretty standard rate. Most of the companies, even the company that we currently use, offer that rate when you pay with a credit card, but I can also ask whether or not that would fluctuate after the three years.
Okay. And one other question is the, those that pay, say, institutions that pay, such as mortgage companies and so forth, are they impacted at all by this particular program? Or, and maybe more the question is, do they pay a particular fee to pay our tax bills?
Now, the mortgage companies send us a check, or they send us a file along with a check, so that we can quickly process the payment, but I've never heard of a mortgage company using the service. They, they just, they get the money from the taxpayers or through the escrow accounts, and then they just, they import their file, they send us a check. So it shouldn't even affect them.
Yeah, I was just looking to see if there's a hidden fee or a fee that the taxpayers paying through their mortgage company because of us charging something or other provider.
If they, if they escrow and they pay through their mortgage, then this wouldn't even impact them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. All right, agenda item six.
This has been the animal control van that we've discussed in this year's budget, as well as next year's budget. I think this is an excellent example of staff going above and beyond what is normal to save whatever funds that we can. There has been a request to replace the oldest animal control van, which I think is about 15 years old or so, and has really seen its better days. And originally, Jim had started to look for a replacement vehicle, which would have cost upwards of about $50,000, but he realized along the way this year that there is a less-used police department van because of involvement by our police department in the Central Connecticut Task Force that might become available, and Jim and his staff at the garage will outfit this vehicle that we presently already own with all of the cages and instruments that the animal control officers will need, and save approximately $22,500 by doing this. We had discussed this, I think, during the budget talks. He's going to do this now, so that we can save on having to purchase the vehicle next year and not have to purchase that vehicle next year. Will need to purchase a new police vehicle, SUV down the road, but that will come out of next year's budget.
Motion?
Are these two separate motions?
You don't have to know.
Okay. Move to approve the police department's traffic control van to be outfitted with the cages and racks from the older animal control van, in order to produce a newer vehicle for the animal control department, and move to approve the transfer of $27,500 from the vehicle reserve into the police vehicle replacement account for the future purchase of one 2017 Ford Explorer Interceptor.
Thank you. Second on this?
Second.
Discussion? Questions? Discussion? Yes, Dave?
Yeah, I just had a question on the amount that was determined to move to the vehicle reserve, the $27,500. Is that the book value of the existing vehicle? Where did we come up with that figure?
We took last year's bid price, say, Connecticut bid price, and we added 3% to it as a good estimate, and talked to the manufacturers or the vendors. The 2017 prices are not out yet, are not certified yet, so we're fairly, fairly sure we're within budget with that.
Okay, and then another question I have is, it indicates in our motion here, a future purchase, so when would that be anticipated for that future purchase? It says 2017. Do the 2017 models come out before the end of this fiscal year here?
Yes. Currently, 2017 price lists are in front of DAS for certification. Once they're certified, that bid will then come out. We'll be able to order those 2017s. We would have done it 2016, but the build-out date, which the dates in which they stopped manufacturing 2016 vehicles had already stopped, so we missed that date, so now we have to go to the next calendar year, our next manufactured year. So that...
So you would come before the council again for...
Probably in about three weeks to a month, we'll be back, and then we'll order that, and you probably won't see that vehicle arrive till the beginning of September, due to the change over with manufacturing.
And this vehicle is this year, and then we approved, right, two more vehicles for next year, right? So this is still in this year's budget, this vehicle? Yeah. Okay, any, yes?
Have we switched, completed the switch over from Crown Vics to the Interceptors?
No, actually not. The two vehicles that you're now purchased, equipment and outfitting, those will be the last two Crown Vic road cars on the road, and then those two Crown Vics will be either relocated or...
Thank you.
Those are the last two.
Okay. Okay, great. Any other...
Quick question, maybe for the chief. What's the status of the car we won? Still haven't gotten at you?
Shocking as it may seem, the state bureaucracy is still holding up the transfer of that car.
That's too bad.
Is it a 2017?
That was a Deer car, right?
They've already, they've already announced the next year's competition, and what you will win, and we still haven't received last year's trophy or prize.
Maybe they'll take it back, because they've got budget problems now.
The governor might need it.
It's in the mail.
Any other questions? Discussion? Okay, motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number seven.
As council may recall, Berlin received a $78,400 Brownfields Assessment Grant for two properties that were going to be looked at, 73 Woodlawn Road and 586 Demming Road. The owners of these two properties also committed to providing the 30% match for the grant funds for a total of $33,600, so if you add that together, there's approximately $112,000 available for the assessments. Of course, the awards were made by town council to enter into contracts with HRP Associates for one property, and also Teagan Bond for the other property, and of course, during their initial investigations, it was recommended that additional investigations continue, and they're proposed for both sites. They, we have gotten the proposals, and since additional funds are still available for the purpose from both the state grant and the 30% matching funds, they are seeking, staff is seeking to have the contracts with HRP Associates for the 73 Woodlawn site, and the Teagan Bond for the 586 Demming Road assessments be increased for a total fee change orders not to exclude $55,070.50, both for the total of $112,000.
Okay, great, thank you. Motion on this?
Move to authorize the town manager to enter into a contract number 2016-22 for the evaluation of sewer flow rates into the Demming Road pump station.
The one before.
Move to authorize the town manager to enter into contracts with the HRP Associates for the 73 Woodlawn site assessments for a fee including change orders not to exceed $55,070.50, with tie-in bond for the 586 Demming Road assessments for a fee including change orders not to exceed $55,070.50, both from the accounts Brownfields Assessment Grant, subject to the receipt of matching funds from each of the property owners.
Great. Second?
Second.
Discussion on this? Questions? None?
I'm just curious. I know it's beyond our scope, the state grant and state money, and of course, we're going to use it if we can get it, but maybe the council could tell me, why is the taxpayer cleaning up this property if the pollution was caused by a private entity? Aren't they responsible for that?
You mean even the state cleaning it up?
Why is the state doing it? Maybe beyond our scope, but, yeah.
Chris Edge, Economic Development Director. The monies are actually for assessment at this point. What it's been is actually, it's a price match between the state monies, I should think a match, but 70/30 with the property owner and the state at this point. It's money they've bonded specifically for this, to look at the Brownfields and clean them up. One of these two, the family had caused the pollution, the other one, they had gotten it, they did not cause the pollution, so there is one party that is going to be taking care of the cleanup on the other end.
I've bought and sold polluted properties.
Absolutely.
It goes back, you know, you have the phase three done, and then it goes back to the owner, it doesn't go to the state.
Understood. Understood. And I think the reason they put this together is properties that were not moving at all. They put these monies forward to do it. It's an interesting program, to say the least, but I know that we've been...
Well, I'm glad we're taking advantage of it.
Absolutely, agreed.
The big picture, though, the long term, if you look at it, if it doesn't get cleaned up, and it becomes a problem, we end up saddled somewhere down the line with a dirty property that we get stuck with, like we've seen in the past, and if you've got an opportunity to use other funds to solve a problem for the town, it's really just...
Like I said, I'm all for using the state money, I was just curious, the logic to have the public back up private businesses.
Because they're never really, most people can't afford to do it, and don't do it, and that's just the reality of it.
They probably walk away.
They walk away and leave you with the ground.
They got no money, bankrupt.
Take it as a loss, and take it off the tax bill.
Okay.
Good, Charlie?
Anybody else? We're good? Motion on the floor?
Thank you.
So, thanks, Chris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you. You know, I just meant, I meant to mention after the, the new way to pay our taxes online, online tax payment, that, you know, I appreciate you guys looking at that, the revenue office, and, you know, again, more convenient for taxpayers. We all know, some of us that do go pay there, there's, you know, sometimes that was the easiest way, just to go there, and of course, there's lines and things, and so, yeah, this hopefully will make it more convenient and also pretty economical.
The younger generation does everything online these days.
Yeah, a lot of us do now, you know, I mean...
I mean, not just the younger, but...
Right, yeah.
That was a compliment for you, mayor. That was a compliment to you.
Right, right.
I've heard.
Sure, I always do some online, but sometimes, but anyway, so that's a good thing. Anyway, I meant to say that after the... Okay, number, agenda number eight.
Eight. We've recently become aware that there may be, or we may have some difficulty in figuring out who should be paying for some sewer and water usage and flows through sewer pump station on Demming Road. Specifically, we need to determine who should be paying a portion of the pump station costs and perhaps the flow and things, so it became necessary to find out from perhaps a consultant or someone who can help us figure out where the lines flow, because it's the border between Newington, Rocky Hill, and Berlin, and it gets a little touchy with the MDC and the other towns and things, so with the staff of the water control issued a request for qualifications to evaluate the sewer flows entering that Demming Road sewer pump station. Selection committee was formed to review the qualifications of four consultants that responded to the RFQ. The committee then agreed then to look at the cost of two of the four firms. Based upon those proposals, the committee recommends selecting David Prickett Consulting LLC, who is associated with Woodard and Curran, for those that may have heard of them, as the lowest bidder and the most cost-effective. The proposal cost is $14,935.80, but they're looking for a contingency of $4,500, and seeking a total project cost of $19,935.80 be approved.
Okay, thank you. Motion on this?
Sure, since I got caught trying to push the meeting faster, and I will read this in the right order now. Move to authorize the town manager to enter into a contract number 2016-22 for the evaluation of sewer flow rates into the Demming Road pump station, and the project be awarded to David Prickett Consulting LLC for costs not to exceed $19,935.80.
You second on this?
Second.
Any discussion? Yes, Dave?
Yeah, just had a question for Mr. Durema, to kind of link this together on how this is going to be helpful for us in the long run, how understanding those flows and linked to the pump station, and what the future plans are with this.
Well, we discovered that MDC hasn't paid us since 1986 in any of these pumping stations. This pumping station is the second largest one we have in service. The interesting part about it is we don't have a very good mechanism for determining flows, so one of the first things we're doing is MDC's doing their own flow analysis, and we figured we better do our own also. Potentially, 600 acres of Newington contributes sewage to this location, 800 acres over in Rocky Hill. Originally, we thought we were the highest contributors, but it turns out that we're probably the smallest, so we have a very small percentage. At this point in time, back in the early, or late 70s, 90% of the flow going into that facility was from MDC, so we need to check on it now to see what the percentage is, because if we're apportioning our cost to them in the future, we're going to need to know what the flows are. There's also a secondary function here, too, because when Matta Bassett builds us, they bill us on the three pumps that are operating at an hourly basis, but sometimes the pumps don't pump, because they're clogged up, and as a result of that, so the flows are calculated based on the pump curves and the pumping time, which then gives them a wrong number, so we might be being billed additionally more than we should be billed from the Matta Bassett. So in the future, I will, I think this is going to provide us with a substantial amount of flow. The other agreement that I found was, is that MDC's responsible for 50% of any of the upgrades in that particular facility. We have never charged them for any percentage at all. We have never charged them for any percentage at all. So historically, I think we have a large amount of money that's going to be, hopefully, brought to us based on this. And then also, in the future, we're going to have to be billing them on a routine basis, because it hasn't been done, and they haven't provided us with any details about that for years.
Excellent, thank you.
1986, I heard that year, that's the year, we haven't known about this since then, or we haven't realized they haven't paid us, or how do we not know that?
I could not find any records after 1986. I looked through some of the old binders, and basically, I couldn't find any kind of percentage payments back in 1986. The last payment that was made was $6,000 to us from the MDC, and since then, it hasn't been done at all. I did a cost estimate for the analysis of what it would cost at the current rate, we're closer to $18,000 to $20,000 a year, should have been paid for.
I mean, since 1986, have we never checked, or how do, like how do we...
I have no idea where it was inherited.
30 years? We didn't, no? We didn't know? Now you make me feel real old, as if your sister was born in 1986.
We also found out that, we also found out as an excursion to this, too, that Rowley Street, Rowley Street is really the dividing line between Newington and Berlin. On the north side of Rowley Street is, in New Britain, excuse me, Newington, there are seven homeowners there that discharge directly into our sewer lines, and three homeowners that use our water, and they're never built by us, they're built by MDC. So all, I don't know how far back that goes, that could be back in the 80s as well.
I mean, how does that happen, I guess? I mean, how do you...
I'm as astounded as you are.
Right? I mean, and how did it come to light, all of a sudden?
Well, this had to do with the MDC facility, because we were upgrading our booster pumping station right in front of the Taco Bell, and when we found out that that particular booster station could not operate under the existing pressure conditions. Originally, it was designed for 75 PSI, now we operate at 130 PSI, so if we didn't have a check valve, we would be giving them water back. So that system was being upgraded, so when we started looking into that, I found one agreement, and then I found extra other agreements, and I was astounded, because these agreements were in place, and nobody seemed to have looked at them. And then, when I did the financial analysis, what limited capability I had, I couldn't find any payments after 1986.
So will MDC pay us? Do they pay?
Good question.
I've heard about a lot of things about MDC.
They're not going to do it. The first thing they did is, the second thing we had to do is, is they hired a consultant, right, Pierce, and they hired a subcontractor to do the evaluation of flows. This is all going to be contingent on flow percentage, because as I said, in the early, early and mid 70s, the flow percentage from the MDC was 90%, and we provided only 10%. So that, that, what do you call it, variation, might be 60, 50%. Originally, I liked, I looked at the building permits, and I got lost, because there's way too many of them, and I reversed it, and I looked at the number of homeowners that we have discharging in there, and we're doing an analysis that way to figure out what our flows are, so we can kind of double-check what happens with the flow characteristics.
Right. Well, I'm glad we finally found it. I hope we have something in place in other areas of town, if there are other issues that we don't let 30 years go by somewhere else, that we perhaps aren't getting paid for what we should be.
I can't be sure of that, but anyway, at least this one is found, so.
Yeah. There's no way to check this, I, you know, I don't know anything about water systems, but I find that hard to believe, that we can't, there's no way to check stuff like this. I mean, we're going to check this one, right? Would we, is there others in the same situation, or this is unique, because it's on the border?
No, this is kind of unique in a sense, because their earlier agreements characterize the flow coming in from Rocky Hill and Newington. I'm not sure that anybody considered those areas being so developed. And when they started developing, and even in Rocky Hill, the area that's designated as to contribution isn't fully developed, so we can anticipate that there'd be more flows there. So this consultant would be setting up a flow analysis to give us what comes out from Newington, what comes out to Rocky Hill, and then what goes into Demming Road. And then, there is a meter station, but apparently, Matta Basset doesn't really look at that, because it's not a non-functioning meter station, which we didn't find out afterwards. So that's why they do this estimate by the number of hours that the pump actually operates. And these are the same pumps that we have to continually unclog, because we have to hire the drain doctor, because what happens is that the flushable items that get in there, they get wound up against the pump, and the pump doesn't work. And it either burns out, or basically doesn't pump at all. And we originally thought that that was from our system, but it turns out to be more likely from MDC's system.
If I may, just to add a couple things. The most important thing is, that was 20 years before I started, so. They disappeared long before me. But to give you some perspective, so you don't overreact to the whole thing, there's a kind of a three-way agreement that involves also Matta Basset District. And if somebody looked at the, one of the agreements quickly, Berlin might look like an ancillary or tangential party, because really, what it says is that Matta Basset is going to flow some of their sewage through Berlin facilities and pipes, and when it gets to Matta Basset, they're going to pay for it. So Matta Basset has been billing MDC for some of this, based on the formula, the percentages that were set up back in the 1980s. In other words, we estimate that you're responsible for 30% or 40% of some, there's certain agreements, where if you looked at it quickly, you might say, okay, that's between them, and they've been billing and paying for that. But what's happened is, some of the agreements been lost, somehow wasn't really enforced. And the numbers have changed. The area around Stu Leonard's and that whole area that we're talking about is all developed now. The numbers are going to be terribly, significantly different in favor of Berlin. There's going to be a lot to be gained on this. And just keep in mind the perspective, we might not recapture all of the historical numbers, because number one, we may not be able to recreate them accurately, and you may have some statute, statute of limitations issues, you may have some collection issues. But the biggest advantage is going to be setting the table for going forward, where you have a good, you know, much healthier contribution from the proper parties going forward, and that's the big, that's kind of the brass ring that we're going to be focused on, because we did, I did take a look at this when it was discovered, we had a little meeting, and it's going to be an interesting chapter.
And perhaps we don't lose track of agreements that we've had?
Well...
Yeah, that might be a start.
They go back to 1968, and that's been part of the problem.
Yeah, the agreements were 60.
Yeah.
They were done in 68, and somehow disappeared, they disappeared in the 80s.
They disappeared.
It's already been a lucrative process, because we owed MDC $11,000 two years ago, because it didn't, I didn't want to pay for the extra billing, and then they came back with the credit for the Rowley Street, and they gave us $20,000 credit right away. So we're chipping away at that credit right away.
No, I mean, it's great that we're here, and going forward, it'll be better. I hope we maintain, you know, a better system going forward to know, you know, what agreements we have, and to be able to monitor them, and, you know, make sure we're not being overcharged or not getting what's due us, so I'm happy we found it, I guess, finally.
Good.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number nine.
These next three agenda items are related, and also, the wrong sheets were attached to items nine and 11, so the proper items are in front of you now, because what was given to you was the price of the delivered, as opposed to the picked up materials. The first one is for the bituminous concrete materials for the town roadways. Each year, Public Works looks to use these materials to repair the local roads. We're looking to work off of the State of Connecticut Department of Administrative Services contract and award to the lowest-cost vendor, Tilcon, based upon the pricing that's in place until February 28th of 2018, and this is for pickup rather than delivery.
And we apologize for submitting the wrong information, and putting together the info and the 200-page contracts, the DAS contracts, we inadvertently submitted the wrong information.
And I would, maybe it's a bad assumption to make, but non-delivered, so a better price.
Correct.
But we're picking it up?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, so we have, so a motion on number nine.
Move to approve utilizing the State of Connecticut DAS contract number 15PSX0232 for bituminous concrete materials through February 28th, 2018, and award the contract to Tilcon Connecticut, Inc.
Second on this?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mayor, I got a question.
Yes.
Has there been an analysis done of the cost-effectiveness of us picking up versus them delivering? And then, the second question is, what is the class or type of product that is picked up the most?
The majority of the information, the answer to the second question, is probably Class 1 and 2 asphalt, more so being Class Number 2, which is the material we use for driveway aprons for patching potholes throughout the year. And as far as an analysis goes, in terms of, you know, having the material delivered, from a practical standpoint, it just doesn't make sense to have the vendor deliver material, particularly if we're patching potholes, where our crew will go out and spend probably three quarters of the day. The amount of material they're going to purchase is probably two or three tons of material, and the vendor, in all honesty, would refuse to deliver that amount of material in the size of the vehicles that they have for that price. It's just not going to happen, unfortunately.
So they wouldn't deliver it to our vehicles, or to a holding place that's large enough?
No, they wouldn't, it wouldn't be cost-effective for them to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Also, those are hot mixes, they wouldn't stay hot long enough if you handled it like that.
They would have to shadow the trucks, they would, that wouldn't be practical. They would have to ride alongside, too.
It's just not practical.
Yeah, I'm assuming the delivered is just come to one spot and drop it.
And drop it, yes. We do that, you'll see with item number 11, occasionally, with the processed stone and that type of material, we'll have them deliver a large volume, and to our yard, then we'll pick it up and go off.
My question is more applicable to number 11.
Okay. Motion on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item 10.
This is actually for the treated salt purchase for this upcoming year. The Capital Region Council of Governments had gone out for their bidding process and have used Cargill de-icing technology, and they've done this for several years now, it's the same vendor. We have previously committed to the same annual quantity, 2,000 tons, and I know we discussed doing some, taking some delivery early with the, some funds that might be left over this year to fulfill the terms of the contract for next year, to save some monies for next year's budget, but they are recommending to extend the contract for the purchase of Cargill's product through the end of next year's season, winter season.
Okay, thank you. Denise, motion on this?
Move to authorize a contract extension utilizing the Capital Region Council of Governments contract number 625, to purchase treated roll salt for snow and ice control from the state low bidder, Cargill de-icing technology, through June 30th, 2017, at the current price of $84.45 per ton.
Second on this?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 11.
This is also the one that needs to have the new sheet, yeah, the revised sheet. This is for the stone and gravel materials that are purchased for minor repairs and paving projects. Again, this is off the State of Connecticut Department of Administrative Services contract, and this is for materials picked up at the plant. As Jim had explained, some of the materials are delivered, but this is for the majority of the materials that are picked up, and it's the lowest-cost vendor, Tilcon, based upon the pricing provided.
Okay, thank you. Motion on number 11?
Move to approve utilizing the State of Connecticut DAS Services contract number 15PSX0026 for road construction materials through June 30th, 2017, and award the contract to Tilcon Connecticut, Inc.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Just a question, the handout shows the Tilcon pricing at its different locations, and is, so that is compared, can you give us like, the highest used one, and what's the dollar, and comparing that to maybe the next lowest bid here? Because I think you were trying to demonstrate that, but now with this new sheet, I'm not on that that quickly to figure out.
All of our materials would be picked up at the New Britain plant, or excuse me, Plainville on Black Rock Avenue.
Yep.
The, we haven't, I'll be honest, we haven't analyzed the various locations throughout Connecticut that Tilcon supplies the material, but when looking at, you know, the cost of driving to those locations and the time involved for our people to do that, New Britain is the plant to purchase the materials at.
What's the next closest, or the company and the next closest location? Are these all the locate, these are just Tilcon locations?
Just Tilcon locations, yes. The others were all significantly higher by probably anywhere from $3 to $5 a ton for materials.
Okay. But then, of course, their plants aren't any closer than the New Britain, Black Rock...
The closest plant is probably Susio and Meriden, but their prices, again, are significantly higher, when you look at the ratios.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thanks. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Jim. Okay, we, that's the end of those, we're on, we have some appointments on here, don't really, I think we only had Conservation Commission, I don't think we had anybody yet slated for that, that's a, that's an alternate spot, we'll have to look at that one. Number two is the Environmental Protection, that one, right, no one's been on that for a while, right? That's one of those that, so, I know we asked this before, but...
It's not full.
Huh? Is this something that...
It's never full.
Yeah, is this something that we should eliminate as a commission, or leave it, or I mean, if no one's been on it, or...
It's established by ordinance, so you can repeal the ordinance.
Yeah, okay, maybe we'll have to look at that, just to see if nobody's on it, and we're not quite sure what it does, apparently does nothing, because it doesn't even meet, so what's the point? So maybe we'll have to look at that in the future. Three and four, Historic District Commission Alternates, I don't think we have any names currently, we'll try and solicit some names, so we can finish some of these up. And we have one name here for the next one, number five, the Housing Authority. He did resubmit, and he wishes to be reappointed, so I would take a motion on that one. For number five. Or nomination, I'm sorry.
Okay, I would like to nominate Michelle Yarnick, is that how you pronounce that, I hope?
Think so.
Something like that? Hope I didn't mess that up.
Okay.
Aaron Ninsick?
Yeah, there you go.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a nomination on the floor, any other nominations? We'll close the nominations, and all those in favor of Ms. Yarnick?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so welcome her back to the Housing Authority. And number six is the Inland Wetlands, we do have one application here, I know, and it looks to be good, as far as registered soil scientists with over 20 years of experience, hopefully, there would be some expertise there that would help us on that commission. So, and that's an alternate spot we'd like to fill, so I'd take a nomination on this.
I'd like to nominate William A. Jackson for the Inland Wetlands and Water Courses Commission.
Thank you. Any further nominations? Now, we'll close the nominations, and take a vote on Mr. Jackson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll welcome Mr. Jackson to the Inland Wetlands. So that would leave just that one left, we'll look at that later. And then we're down to eight and nine are, again, another, Plainville, the Area Cable Television Advisory, which, again, right, nobody has been on this? All right, so that's another one, so we probably need to, and that, I assume, Kate, that's by ordinance, too?
No.
Or no? This is a different, this isn't a charter?
Yeah. An advisory council appointment.
Okay. And did there's...
It has to do with the cable.
Right.
And years ago, when cable first came out, it was trying to like protect the consumer and everything. I'm not sure.
I know.
People wouldn't want to be on that, especially with all the controversy with the YES Network leaving and all that. You'd think people would be chomping at the bit for this.
Yeah. I mean, can we... Can you just explore for next... Just where they meet, what they do, or are they still meeting actively? Do we even know?
Anywhere.
They still meet actively.
They do?
I've talked to the woman a couple of times. She keeps telling me she's sending stuff out, but I haven't seen them.
She never does, okay.
But they meet on the other side of Plainville, is my understanding. So the distance is...
Well, Plainville's not that big. It's not New York City or anything. I mean, you know, it's not that far.
But I think what it is, is it's like a half an hour drive.
Okay.
To wherever the meeting is.
An easy way to get there. Okay. Well, I mean...
And we're all spoiled, like, the ten-minute drive.
Yeah, well, I get it. But I mean, if we could just maybe... If you can, even if she hasn't sent, just explore what they're doing. If it's something we should be involved in, we can maybe find at least one person to maybe attend some of the meetings, you know, just so we know what's going on. And, you know, I agree, if there's something... There always seems to be some controversy with cable TV, right?
Yeah.
So we'll have to look at that and see if we could find someone. And number ten, the Veterans Commission. We did get... We had a resignation recently. We have a couple of people that are interested. What I wanted to do is just table that for tonight. I've spoken to everybody up here. I just wanted to talk to a couple of the people. You know, we had one of the individuals that wanted to be reappointed. He has a different position now, but maybe we would consider him back on, or maybe, you know, put this... There's another person that sent in an application. But I wanted to have a chance to talk to both of them before we make any decisions on number ten, so if we could just table that and put that for the next meeting, I'll have some time to talk to them. Eleven, the Water Control Commission Alternate. We don't... I don't... We don't have any names right now, nominations. So we'll table that till next time in the Zoning Board of Appeals. We'll try and find someone, a couple of people for those two, both, I think, important positions. So we'll look to see if we can get some nominations for eleven and twelve, so maybe put those on... So ten, eleven, twelve, put those on next time, if you would. And that takes care of that. And now we're to the Town Managers report.
Just a couple of things. Tomorrow evening at seven o'clock is the public... First public hearing on the charter revision. The commission had their organizational meeting last Wednesday, and to move things along, I believe they're going to be meeting regularly every week on Mondays and Thursdays, but they have to first have the public hearing, and they've scheduled that for tomorrow evening in this room, Town Council chambers. So if anyone is watching on television and wishes to come out and address...
Seven, seven, five.
Seven PM, yep. There is also next Tuesday, the referendum on the budget, which is April twenty-sixth. All the polling places will be open, as well as the schools. Unfortunately, we have talked with the superintendent who is considering perhaps doing a half-personal day or professional day or whatever he might be able to achieve at this late date because also not only is it the referendum for our budget, but it is the primary day for both parties, Republican and Democratic Party are having their primaries on the day. So there will probably be a rather large turnout, and some of our polling places are at the schools, which makes it a little difficult. The police are aware of this at this point because the last time we've had that, we've had police officers there just in case there are any parking issues or children issues or things that come up during the day because there's a lot of people that are expected to be voting this year. So... And remind everyone to go out and vote for the referendum as well. And then on Wednesday evening of next week, the Board of Ethics is going to be having their first meeting in many, many years, apparently. Wednesday, April twenty-seventh at five forty-five, they're going to be reviewing their first order of businesses to be reviewing, the Audit Committee recommendations, and it was felt that they could also maybe take a look at... Jim Ren had drafted a proposed ethics policy for the town, and I think that they felt that it's necessary to at least get together and meet one another and make sure that they're all aware of what they may need to do in case there is... In the past, they've only met when there has been a complaint lodged against an official or an employee, and knock on wood, there haven't been any in many years, so no one has met. But it was felt that at least perhaps once or twice a year might be a good idea for this commission to meet. It is set up by the charter. That's another thing that perhaps the Charter Commission will look at to maybe have something. So they have set up a meeting for Wednesday, April twenty-seventh at five forty-five. And I believe the Audit Committee is also going to be present to just discuss things with them. The other thing that I did email all of you on is that we have become aware that the governor's new proposals are affecting the towns in a way that had not necessarily been expected or desired. His latest budget proposal to close the gap in the state's budget is cuts to all the municipalities. First, it was last Tuesday, it was the ECS monies for towns. In fact, he cut twenty-eight towns to zero. The other towns, he cut somewhat. Some didn't get cut at all. I'm not sure the rationale behind it, but the town of Berlin was cut approximately three-hundred-and-twenty-some-odd-thousand dollars in the ECS. Then on Wednesday morning, we woke up and found that he had further made recommendations to cut the new... Newly created revenue sharing monies that had been, I believe, done by statute. So we're not really a hundred percent clear on how that can just be cut. This is all part of that SB, the Senate Bill One last year, where the mill rate was set at thirty-two mils, and there's some funds that will be given to towns if the mill rate exceeds thirty-two mils. But the motor vehicle tax bills can only be thirty-two mils, so there'd be a gap in some towns. So that money wasn't touched. But the sales tax revenue sharing funds that had been proposed, and Berlin was to receive one million, two-hundred thousand dollars, he cut Berlin by a million dollars in that account. So I had thrown out the request or the suggestion that perhaps council may wish to discuss it either tonight or on Monday. I know that the referendum is on Tuesday, so that also throws a wrinkle, but the timing is difficult in that right now, the legislature is set to end their session on May fourth, and by charter, we have to... The town has to have a budget by May tenth. So at best, there's very little time in between the end of the session and when the budget has to be set by the town, so...
Yeah. Is that more?
Yep.
You're done? That's a good way to end.
Concerned.
Yeah, I mean, that's very disturbing, obviously. I mean, we went through our painstaking budget process and came up with what I thought, think, I think we all think is a pretty good budget, and despite the tough economic times. And now we have this, although, you know, others I've spoken to, this is not a final figure. It's... They're not done yet, obviously, as you said, Denise. So now, in my opinion, and we'll hear from everybody here that wants to speak, is that just let it ride for now. I really don't see much point in trying to figure this out yet because we have no clue what the final figure will be. We still do have some time, granted, not much. I would, you know, let the referendum go, obviously, and see what happens with this session. I mean, I'm not convinced, in my opinion, that the session's going to end in early May anyway, but... So we may not even have that figure for a while, but... So, you know, it's... Obviously, puts all the town... All of us, we're all in the same boat. Every town's in the same boat. So I would just let it go for now and hope they can resolve it before our May tenth deadline, and we would have a few days at least to look at whatever comes out of this session, which we... I don't think anyone has any clue, yeah, what it will finally be, but hoping it up to discussion, you know, whatever you guys think.
So taking a look at it, Mayor, with the tenth being when we need to make that decision, we may want to contemplate having a meeting potentially on the fifth, which would be the Thursday after their supposed end.
Yeah.
And deciding on the fourth, so I mean, that would be...
We can tentatively send one.
That would be my recommendation to be able to consider Thursday. And we could even go a step further. We could even put one subsequent to the budget referendum on the twenty-sixth and potentially look at the one on the twenty-eighth to discuss further because otherwise... Well, actually, we have a council meeting on the third where we could discuss the referendum results, and then on the fifth, that would then give us some time to, you know... If the state decides by the fourth, then we would have another meeting to resolve anything that finally comes out of their group. I mean, we could certainly look the following week, Monday, but right now, I'd suggest if we know that the possible end on the fourth of May, then we would have a discussion on the... A meeting on the fifth of May.
Yeah.
And we will have the... Again, we'll have the... Our own council meeting on the third, so it's looking to have two meetings the weekend, the first week of May.
Yeah, I mean, I... No, I would... I think that makes sense. I mean, that would be the timeframe. We have to discuss it, so that's good. We have a couple of meetings, and again, let's hope we have a final figure by then, but that's the best we could go with now. Anybody else? Brandon?
No.
You guys?
I'm inclined to agree with waiting as long as we feasibly can wait. I think Monday is probably our best bet because I don't see this being wrapped up by Thursday even, so...
Yeah, I agree. I don't... I don't think anybody knows the ending to this, but we'll just wait and see. There's nothing else to do. It's very... It's disturbing. It's, you know, frustrating, and we did all this work, and we came out with a nice, you know, I think a pretty reasonable budget for everyone, and now, who knows? Back to the drawing board, which won't be pleasant, but anyway. Okay, so we'll set... Let's set a meeting. We have the council meeting on the third. Let's... If we could set a meeting on the... It's the fifth, everybody, and you think you guys are all available on the fifth of May for a second meeting?
Possibly.
Yeah, and we'll play it by ear, you know, and we'll just tentatively set it, and we'll see.
Do you want it at seven, or do you want it earlier?
Earlier, please.
Do you want it at six?
Yeah, six. I can't... Yeah, I can't do earlier than six, pretty much. Is that a Thursday? That's a Thursday.
There is Thursday.
Yeah, I can't... I can't do earlier than six. Six?
There's a spring concert at the high school at seven o'clock.
Okay. Five-thirty? We can do five-thirty?
Friday?
No, no. Oh, we could, yeah, if you want.
You mean the sixth?
Yeah.
You want to do Friday instead? What's it... The tenth is our day?
Yes.
Yeah, if you want to try Friday. Check, I don't think of anything offhand, but again, tentatively.
My suggestion is Thursday, the fifth, at five-thirty.
All right, let's do that. That's fine, we'll stick with that. And we can always change it, you know, we'll see how it goes.
We'll have a better flavor on our Tuesday before on the third.
Yeah.
I would like to just put it on the calendar.
Yeah, that's fine. So we'll just... We'll keep it fluid. If we have to change it, we'll change it, so it's the best... I think that's the best we could do, best we could hope for at this point, and hopefully they... Those figures that they released change for in our favor. Let's hope as we go forward. Okay, great. Special Committee reports, do we have any? Special Committees? Nothing. Council Communications? Anybody?
I just want to encourage anybody who's registered with a party to please come out and vote in your primary next week. I know I said this at our last meeting, and I'm going to say it again today because it's important. This is your party's nominee. If you're registered with the party, that's, you know, the person who's going to run for Senate and, you know, potentially other op... Oh, yeah, God, President, I'm sorry, and potentially other offices. It's important, so everybody needs to please get out and vote.
Okay. Peter, anything?
Nope.